All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Scioto Township Planning Commission meeting for December 8th, 2025. And I just want to comment to the folks that are attending via livestream or Zoom that the cameras in the room are not working this morning or this evening. So we're going on sound only. So with that, roll call, please.
Brent.
Here.
Walsh here. Moore.
Here.
Hyde here. Over to someone.
Here.
Fletcher.
Present.
Hindle.
Here.
All right. Thank you for everyone being here. Adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the posted agenda?
Moved to adopt the agenda.
Moved by Moore, supported by Hyde. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Agenda is approved as posted. Communications and correspondence have any? Anyone? Anyone else? Okay, we have no presentations, so we're going to move to public comment. And this is our general public comment. There'll be specific opportunities to comment in the public hearings for both Ember Grove and Hometown Pizza Golf Simulators. So I'm going to open this public comment at 7:02. And this is for any matters which are not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. And please, any oral presentations shall be limited to three minutes, except for a representative or spokesperson of the group. Would anyone who is in Township Hall want to address the Planning Commission on anything other than the two public hearing topics this evening?
Move to what?
Which are Ember Grove and the golf simulator. If it's anything else, you're welcome to come up.
Yeah, there was a couple of questions I had was, uh...
Yeah, please come forward. Yeah.
Yeah, come from?
That's fine. That way the mic picks you up better.
All right.
Yeah, and there's a sign in sheet for the general public comment. You can sign in after you, after you finish with it.
I was just wondering about the sewage, what was gonna be going on with the sewage with this development? Is it gonna be an onsite situation or what?
Are you talking, addressing Ember Grove?
Yeah, the one off of Parker and Jackson Road.
Yeah. Well, yeah, they will do a presentation that will cover their utilities and so forth. So, yeah.
All right, that's all I wanted to know about.
Okay, great. Well, I'm glad to get it. Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Yes.
Did we get his name?
We didn't, but yeah. Anyone? All right.
Rob Pattinson.
Hi, everyone. Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township President. Jan and Chris Chang, thank you both very much for getting me here on River Watershed Council workshop last week on Zoom. I've got it posted on the Scioto Community News YouTube channel. I was very pleased to see so many people turn out and have such an energetic conversation about the protection of wetlands and natural areas and, and the redefining, well, the clarifying of what areas are where so that they can go back and update their maps. So the question, Jan, for you is when those maps come back from Kate and the team, will that be posted on the, on the website somewhere?
Yeah, I'm gonna just clarify that. We can talk about it a little bit. What, what, they had the bio reserve map, which is their designation. And this was a conversation about what other areas, because they are only dealing with certain criteria in the bio reserve. So they're gonna come back with a map that chose other areas that were identified within that workshop for the Planning Commission. And then it'll be up to the Planning Commission to look at that and, and work with Carlisle Warpman as we look, address the open state, the open ordinance, and also possibly opening a master plan next year.
Brilliant. Thank you, Jan, very much. That's gonna be great for the future guidance of the, of the township. And thank you much for being there, you and Chris Chang and Kathleen and Bob Hyde.
Bob Hyde, yeah. He spearheaded it.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you all for making that happen. And then thank you for having the data center conversation tonight. That has been a huge issue in communities surrounding us, and it's good that we get in front of that. So, well done. Have a good meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Anyone else?
No.
Entertain a motion to close public comment.
So moved by more, supported by Walsh.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's closed at 7:06. Moving on, we do have two public hearings this evening. And the first one is...
Fifty minutes.
Whoops, minutes, sorry. Thank you. Minutes? Just cruising here.
Yep. Move to approve the minutes.
Okay, Hyde, Fletcher. Any, oh, it was Hindle, sorry. Make that Hindle. I just saw the voice over here. Sorry. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes.
I'm not opposing, but I'm not voting. I was gonna hear.
Oh, okay. And one abstention more? All right, then we'll move, the minutes are approved as drafted. Now we're moving to our public hearings. So thanks for coming in place. All right. All right, our first public hearing is PSP number 24017 Ember Grove. And we'll be opening the public hearing currently at 7:07. And the kind of agenda for the public hearing is the applicant provides a presentation. Then the Planning Commission can ask, answer, or ask questions of fact. We go to our reviewer, our planner, engineer reviewers, and then we open it up for public comment. So everyone has the benefit of, of hearing the basic presentation and so forth. And then, then under new business, we, we take up any action or deliberation. All right, so please introduce yourselves and welcome.
Thank you very much. Evening, everyone. I'm Brooks Cowan with Pulte Homes alongside Matt Bush with Atwell Engineering, presenting on our Ember Grove proposal. I know we did an informational a month ago, but I do want to go over the topics for the sake of the public hearing as well. Starting out with your master plan, we're within the mixed-use office industrial section of your future land use map that recommends a density of four to eight units per acre, a high-density residential alongside being within the Jackson Road sub area, which also recommends a high-density residential and multi-family aspect of the use, which we will be complying with in our proposal. Touching on the surrounding area, we are in the western portion of Scioto Township, proposing four units an acre with 256, 259 units total. We did want to point out that we are nearby the Woodview Commons, which is 456 total units and five units an acre, and that we're along Jackson Road near that development, proposing a similar density. All right. So here we have our site plan, 259 total units with four units per acre density. So for the housing mix, we have 104 single-family units. The lot areas are highlighted here within the yellow. Those are 40-foot wide lots. We also have 96 duplex ranches for your two-person household. Those are located on the western portion of the site plan here. You can see this walkway going through the middle. All of the 96 duplex ranches are located west of that walkway. And then between the duplex ranches is a common element space. So it's more low-maintenance living maintained by the HOA. And then on the northeastern portion of the property is 59 townhomes for more of your young professional type of buyer. We're maintaining open space and woodland protection, number of tree stands being preserved. We have a pocket park with a playground, which I can get into more details, located within the center of the single-family area. And I know last, last month while we were here, we talked about a bus stop, wave stop. We've spoken with Wave and are amenable to working with them and the, and our transit on developing a bus stop off of Jackson for the residents as well. Wanted to start out with the natural features. We will be having 37% of the open space for the site being preserved, which is about 24 acres. I also wanted to highlight in this neon green, the preservation of our quality tree stand area, given what's being there right now. There are some sections of trees that need to be cleared for grading and installation of utilities. However, going through the site design, we're still able to maintain large portions of tree stands in the central northern portion, as well as along the edges of the subject site. We'll also be planting 357 new trees along the roads. There were some questions about wetlands at the last meeting. And so we wanted to provide this slide here to highlight what wetlands are being preserved, which ones will be mitigated to accommodate some of the development. So 0.67 acres out of a total of 2.07 acres of wetland onsite will be impacted. So that 0.67 acres is highlighted in the red. You can see a road here and then over on the eastern section. However, we did want to point out, highlighting in green, those wetlands will be preserved. And they have the 30-foot buffer required, those wetlands. You see a number of them located within the tree stands as well. And we just wanted to point out, as you were talking about earlier, we're not in the Grand River Bio Reserve area, subject to some of their recommendations.
So while when you were here last time during your presentation, you indicated that there were 11 wetlands and you were only preserving two of the 11. Is that still correct?
I'm not quite sure. I'm not quite sure what was exactly said about that. I think we were talking about two acres, maybe? I think we were talking about acreage and percentages. I'm not sure about the total number.
We're preserving a lot more than two wetlands on this thing.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I noticed on the good ones.
Yeah, every green spot. For drainage, water, and sewage, I'm here with Matt Bush and I'm gonna defer more questions to him. But in, you know, in summary, we have three detention ponds. All of the stormwater will be detained onsite for requirements. We'll be connecting to the township water and sewer. We are installing 1,200 linear feet of eight-inch water main to enhance the system pressure. We've obtained preliminary approval from the Washington County Water Resources. And a big part that we want to talk about for our proposal is that in our conversations with the township staff and some of the needs for, for the area, we're proposing to donate 150,000 for sanitary sewer improvements for Scioto Township as part of our PUD public benefit. So moving on to some of the elevations and proposals. This is one of the concepts for the single-family home. This is the Raven model. It's about 2,000 square feet, has a four-bed, two-and-a-half bath, targeted for your young professional, new family buyer, trying to keep it for that attainable pricing. Other models, the 2,100 square foot and the 2,200 square foot. So those are our conceptuals for the single-family home. So there's 40-foot lots, and these are 30-foot wide homes, trying to, trying to reach an attainable price point for Scioto Township with these models. And for the duplexes, these are more your two-family household, your, your moved-down buyer, active adult. These are low-maintenance living, where the HOA takes care of the yard maintenance. These are 1,600, 1,800 square feet, two-bed, two-bath, first floor, main bedroom for all of them. And then this is concept for our townhomes. These are 1,800 square feet, three-bed, two-and-a-half bath, targeted more for the, the young professional, some new family looking to be inside of Scioto Township as well. These are 24 feet wide. Here's another option for the colors, working through the concepts as we go through preliminary and then final site plan.
Do the, um, do the duplexes have garages as well?
Yes. To the amenities section. As I said in the beginning, I know in the last meeting, you talked about bus stop. I called Wave and they said that they were amenable to moving some of the routes, but that we could also coordinate with Inter Transit if they were expanding the bus. Keep those conversations. And so we don't have an exact bus stop design right now, but as we move through final site plan, we're amenable to coordinating with those agencies on how they want their stops to look like in terms of maintaining consistency for those models. There was also some questions about a playground. I believe that some of the designs for the playground was forwarded to...
Should be the best you can.
Yep. So what was forwarded to you is our typical playground. I believe it has a capacity for 28 kids, targeted ages five to 12. Talking with our land developer, he says that one thing unique to Pulte is that they do the underground drainage for their playgrounds as well. Some places just put it on clay. We wanted to be able to drain properly so that it can be used at all times of the year, particularly when there's a snow melt, so you don't have giant puddles around the playground. They, I think it has a six-foot fall zone, and they installed a specific type of mulch, like a safety mulch, our developer was talking about. And so he was able to give me more details about that. We'll have sidewalks on both sides of the road with the curb lawn for the trees that separates the sidewalk from the road, that safe gap feeling. We'll have benches along our walkways. And then also wanted to point out, we'll have a, of a nature walk connecting from the northwest section to the church that our proposal wraps around. So that church is amenable to having an opening for this walkway, where residents from our neighborhood will be able to access the baseball field, it leaves a soccer field and a smaller playground there. So broader open space for them to connect to with that walkway. For some of the sustainability initiatives, homes will become prepared with e-vehicle-ready garages, solar-ready roofs. The construction materials in the roads will have recyclable materials within the pavement for approval from engineering and the township. We'll have low-impact stormwater designs. We'll have the optionality for energy-efficient appliances for electric versus gas. And I think for sustainability, the big part that aligns with your master plan that we're bringing in is clustering a higher-density residential development with multiple stores and housing types along Jackson Road, along a mixed-use corridors, where there's more amenities to be accessed within a close range to help reduce some vehicle miles traveled. So with that, to wrap things up, just want to touch upon our PUD recognizable benefits that we wanted to talk about. Number one would be diversity of housing at various price points for these different types of consumer groups. Open space and natural features, closing 37%. I believe the minimum is 20% for a PUD. Water looping improvements in terms of installation of a water main. Matt will be able to speak more to that, the benefits. Pedestrian accessibility with the internal walkways. New sidewalks along Jackson and Parker and connectivity throughout the neighborhood, as well as the, the outer area. We'll be proposing, we're amenable to installation of a bus stop along Jackson Road for multimodal transportation enhancements. And then finally, the regional sanitary sewer improvements with the donation of $150,000. So with that, I leave it to you with any questions and comments.
Questions of that? Just all before. Yes.
You were talking about the wetlands and I was writing and missed something. I think you said you had them highlighted in green right there. And did you see something about the ones that you had to remove or in red? I seen one in the upper right, the northeast corner, but where else?
So here's the section, I believe, this is the largest section in the red here. And then there's some smaller parts. This is within...
I see.
Setback, it's a little too tight there. This portion right here. We have a road going through here and then...
Well, the road doesn't let it be. It doesn't go over it. There's no culvert or anything.
There would have to be some fill there.
We'd, we'd have to put in a culvert there.
Okay. And then finally, I believe the last red section of the highway is a small one here, or...
What about in the center, which looks like it's bordering green? Is that all one wetland?
Where?
Right where is Park?
There.
Yep. Is he half red, half green?
She's talking about the darker area as well.
Yeah, just the part that's red that would be infected.
Right next to the red is green.
Yeah.
Is that...
But it's not, wait, is it?
So, Matt, you wanna...
Excuse me, my question is, is that one wetland that you're impacting part of the wetland?
Yes, that is one small wetland side there. We're impacting the north part of that wetland. Preserve the south.
So as I'm looking at that, I see, I count nine different green areas. And then I count two, just that one dot in the area that Commissioner... One, two, three, four, five. I've counted at least five, six.
There's a couple of those really hard-to-see red ones because they're so thin, so thick.
Yeah.
There's a few.
So how many of those are there, the red?
Red, I, I'm counting. I got one, two, three, four, five, six. A number of them are quite thin. And then for the green, we have one, two, three, four as a big one, five, six, seven, eight.
Eight. Okay. Other questions? Can you go over the tree removal numbers and how many of those are landmark trees?
When, yeah, did you even, was there even one in here?
I don't know.
Yeah, so, no, right now during the preliminary, we put boots on the ground to look at general areas. We try to identify the more dense tree areas of the better-quality trees. And then those are the big stands that we're staying out of as of right now. Before final, we'll be doing a detailed tree survey per standard, six inches up to, and be able to identify the landmarks and further refine our tree save efforts. But the idea was, let's stay out of the big areas. Let's try and preserve from a big level, see if it's amenable to you guys. And then from there, move forward with the tree survey before final site plan.
Based on those, though, are there other larger stands that you're impacting?
Not larger. There's a couple linear areas that currently we're probably looking to impact because the way that, you know, development works with mass grading and that. But we're, we've reduced our, our push into all of the areas of more dense trees. And we will look, once we have an official tree survey, we'll look to ways to preserve some more of those areas. Like, we may be able to get creative. If the tree stand ends up being right down the middle of those lots, we may be able to save some more trees or relocate one unit. So we can get more creative with the saving a tree here, saving a tree there once we do the detailed tree survey. But as of right now, we did create a plan based off the overall.
We get a tree survey during Planning Commission approval of the PUD?
During final, yes.
Yes, but not yet. I haven't seen one yet.
No, but, but this is preliminary, so, yeah.
Does the final PUD come back here?
Yes. So there is a trees, a line of trees right now separating farmer's fields right down the center of the single-family condo lots that you're not indicating you're going to be preserving those, even though it's right on the, you know, where the lots butt together. Yeah, we just don't want to do any false commitments here. We're definitely gonna look to try and save those trees, you know, with lots back up too. So we have storm sewer down there. So we'll look at ways to get creative to try and dodge it with the storm sewer and that. But we are, we're, you know, when the tree line goes through to that park there, we situated that park so we can save the bottom tail of that, that tree row there. And when we get the tree survey, we'll be able to protect one of them. But right now, we're, we're committing to save trees where we can. I would be looking for that line of trees, if not others, to have some of your creative grading. The terms mass grading doesn't, doesn't sit well, but it doesn't... I mean, I understand you're gonna get big equipment in there and get it done quickly, but, yeah, it's still me.
We're getting into comments. I wanna, I wanna keep to the facts at this point.
My comment is, that's missing.
Okay. Mr. Walsh?
Quick question. It looks like from this map, the northern border with I-94, you're not looking to put in any sort of sound buffer. You're just gonna leave it the natural features that are there?
Correct.
I do have a question.
Or a comment. You list as a public benefit, and I questioned this prior, 1,200 linear feet of water main to enhance this, enhance the system pressure and safety. That is entirely for the system pressure, pressure in your development. It has nothing to do with the SIO system. Does nothing to enhance the system pressure in SIO's water system.
So by providing the two, two points, I don't necessarily disagree with you as far as, providing the two points, we're providing more redundancy and this development will be in SIO. So there is, we're, it's not nothing. And whether you want to consider that that's our proposal, that's a benefit. But we're, the 1,200 feet of water mains are pretty long stretch in order to be able to connect two points and have redundancy drop.
redundancy is strictly for your benefit. The point I'm trying to make is I do not see that as a benefit.
To the township.
To the township. And I said that before. And I wanted to make sure I clarified that it has nothing to do with... No, that it had nothing to do with SIO's system that's completely contained within the proposed development.
I'd like to ask a question.
It does, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, but it does provide for water main for any future connections for residents right on the border there. But yes, I, I understand.
Even another question?
I do. Okay. So that I understand, so our sewer system comes all the way out to Parker. Is that correct?
It goes out to our front edge. It doesn't go all the way out to Parker.
And you're gonna pay the cost of having to go through wherever it needs to go to extend that out?
We're gonna pay the cost to extend it throughout our development. And then per discussions with the Utilities Director, you know that there's a need for upgrading.
Yeah, I know about the donation. I'm, I'm not minimizing it. I understand that part. Okay, so there's that. And then the water, you're gonna, you're gonna pay for or build more piping to bring the water out? And what's the footage in that?
That's 1,200 feet.
It's within their property, but how far do you have to...
Sorry, I just want to understand. I just want to understand what you're saying right now. So 1,200 feet of piping from where? From Baker Road?
From Jackson to Parker Road.
From along Jackson?
It's, the water's already along Jackson, so it'd be running it up Parker Road.
Can you maybe show it with the, yeah?
So it'd be, Jackson Road's kind of cut off down here, but it'd be up along Parker Road here, running water main.
I see. I'm sorry, Kathleen, I just wanted to understand.
No, I was, it was a tag along too. Do you know how far currently, like, I should know, how far currently SIO's water main runs along Jackson Road?
Just double-check that. Some of the false information. I appreciate that.
In the same for sewer. I'm just curious how much you have to extend.
1,200 feet we have to extend, or we're going to extend, and it goes all the way to Parker Road.
Currently, it goes all the way to Parker?
That's sewer and water?
Just water.
How about the sewer?
Sewer, I can give you... Looks like sewer might, there's a 10-inch on the south side of Jackson Road. We have it mapped out to the church. I'd say it doesn't go farther, but I'd have to look at O H M's paths to see. But we wouldn't need to do anything with the sewer over there.
So you're gonna extend the sewer 1,200 feet as well as water, 1,200 feet?
No, the sewer runs along the front, the sewer already runs along the front of Jackson Road.
Okay.
And that's where the extra redundancy comes in, where running additional water main to make a second connection.
Yeah, so it'll loop rather than dead-end at Parker?
Correct.
Other questions of...
I have a question. I'm sure you may not know this, but do you know what the REUs are connected to that property, them being the... I have a question, I'm sure you may not know this, but do you know what the REUs are connected to that property, them being the sewer?
Yeah, the uh, total REUs, I mean, we'll work through you with uh, OHM here, but it's gonna be less than two hundred and fifty-nine because that's the number of units. Usually uh, the townhomes and the duplexes are one-six REUs per unit, and then the single family are one. So.
So just so you, each property within the township along that particular, particular, I'm thinking along the Jackson Road, has a certain amount of REUs associated with the property?
Yes.
What I'm asking you is now that it's gonna get developed, do you know what the existing REUs are?
I, I do not know what the existing REUs are. REUs assigned to that property, I can certainly get that from OHM.
Yeah, I, I think it's probably their question for OHM.
Right, then I'm gonna go ahead and.
I got one more.
Oh, you have one more question, sorry.
Um, so you refer to um, access to the church's property. Do you have that in writing? That they are amenable to these residents accessing their property?
That's something we can talk with them about it, off the top of my head, uh, firm agreement.
Yeah.
I'm not aware of, however, we've had conversations.
It's hearsay, first, if it's not documented, it's, you're telling me this. But we need to also be um, I'm isn't in, aware of the impacts to your neighbors and the church is one of your neighbors. So I would like to see something concrete that says they're fine with um, your plans to have these units access their playgrounds, wear and tear on their playgrounds.
Sorry, if I can interject, I'm a member of Peace Lutheran Church, I'm just observing, I've not spoke with these folks just yet. But um, I can speak to that whenever you'd like me to, now we're in public comment time.
You can wait till public comment. Thank you for identifying yourself. But so, the bet is a, a standing question, so.
So this is a preliminary PUD, which is the first step in the review process. As you see from our report, this is our third review. So we've already, OHM and Carla Wortman have already held a concept meeting regarding that, actually a couple of concept meetings regarding this project and reviewed this project three times prior to it coming before you. So we've ironed out a lot of details um, before it came to you tonight. After preliminary, after the public hearing and preliminary consideration by the planning commission, you will at some point offer a recommendation, whether that's tonight or at some future meeting to the board. And then the board will take action on the preliminary PUD plan at some point in the future. After the preliminary PUD has been um, approved by the board, that gives the applicant um, the, the um, approval they need or the, the acknowledgement that they need to move forward to more detailed engineering, where they will do the tree survey and.
Preliminary approval.
The preliminary approval gives them kind of that. Um, and that's where we also will, um, you know, the board is gonna look at some community benefits during the preliminary phase, but, but they're gonna be buttoned up um, before final approval, right? Um, and a development agreement will be signed at that time. So, we're at preliminary, prelim, you're gonna make a recommendation at some point to the board, they're gonna approve preliminary. Final will come back to you, we're gonna have a much more detailed plan, engineer drawings. At that point, you will again make a recommendation to the board and the board will approve it. And at the time of the final PUD is approved, it's a rezoning. So it's not rezoned until the final PUD is approved, but the PUD is a rezoning of property. And it's rezoned to the specific site plan. And, and, and there's a development agreement and all sorts of things. So I just kind of wanted to give you an overview of where you, where we are right now. You have my report, um, I think of note, we've talked about a lot of things, but I think of note, as part of this PUD, what the applicant is really hoping is to do, a mixed-use residential development um, in this area of the township. They are asking for several waivers, as they're calling them, or deviations um, to the, primarily to the single-family um, district regulations, having smaller lots, um, lesser setbacks as part of this PUD approval. Um, I think there's a couple of building separation distances too in the multifamily portion of the development. So as part of the rezoning approval, um, you and the board are approving um, the size of lots, the building separation, the type of buildings, et cetera. I mean, unless you have some specific questions um, regarding my report, I think um, we reviewed it three times. I think they've done a great job, um, you know, providing additional feed, you know, uh, additional changes based on our feedback. Um, and uh, I think, I think um, it's, it's gonna be a, a great project.
Any questions for Laura?
I do.
Go ahead.
So it was a lot to read through, but I for one appreciate the detail, so thank you. On page four of your memo, um, you indicate that you see that they're looking for waivers for um, building height. What would that entail?
So if you go to page ten.
Oh, in your chart?
Yeah, it doesn't have building height.
Oh.
For the townhomes?
Two and a half stories instead of two.
Yeah, oh, two and a half stories for the townhomes.
How do people use the half story?
You gotta find over.
Storage. Okay. Playground. Um, I did see.
Uh, this is commenting, is this a question?
Because we're just in the public hearing portion, we're not deliberating that.
Okay, fair enough.
All right.
So i- in, in your memo, you, you, on page four on the bottom, um.
Yeah, in previous iterations, we had suggested some sort of playscape or active recreation, and they have added the play, the playscape.
Well, I see, yeah. Is that what that's called, a playscape? I was thinking of a playground, but, but any, even, um, I'm asking you, like, you say, we also note that a pocket park playscape proposed within development that includes seating. Um, yeah, the final stage of the PUD review, the details of the playscape must be provided. So right now, um, I'm taking those words to mean that we don't need to deal with that, that we will revisit the playground.
Yeah, so.
I'm gonna use the word playground because I'm not sure what a playscape is.
Sure, so, you know, they've demonstrated a potential location within a pocket park for some sort of active play. Um, at this stage, I think that's, that's appropriate. Um, we could talk more during the deliberation if there's some specific things that you would like to see there and give them some, some additional feedback. But um, I think they've committed to, to providing the active space. And so as part of these next conversations, that can be hashed out.
Okay, and where is that low, where would that be located? On your diagram? Is that green or yellow? Oh, right by the yellow, so that's in the single-family home section. And um, I'm, I'm sorry, I missed my opportunity to ask you, so I'm gonna ask the planner. Is that, would that be uh, available for kids that live in the townhomes or a duplex?
Sure, I think it, I think it is, it's a little further um, from where those are located. But I think in, in, in understanding the, the mix of people that they're, that they're attracting, right? They are anticipating that older, active people are gonna want the duplexes. That's not to say that a family wouldn't live there. And that younger people, maybe with young families or no family, are probably living in the townhomes. Um, you know, babies like to walk in a walker, stroller, right? But they don't, maybe they don't need a playground. So I think they're trying to provide a mix of different type of housing for different people. And where it would make the most sense is to have the park in the, where the small, single-family um, lots are. That's not to say there couldn't be another pocket park with another, um, if, if they felt that um, those.
There's some major assumptions going on there that one child wouldn't live in a townhome or even a duplex, but I'll leave that alone.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying they're all, but there could be a child that lives in there. But, but there is a playscape, there is a pocket park, and there are other ways, there, there are sidewalks on both sides of the street to get there.
Okay, and how big is that area? For the playground, well, we can talk about that.
We don't have that right now. Yeah, okay. Comments?
Right, um, who called up, OHM?
Good evening, we recommended this project as well in our letter from October twenty-fourth. We had a few minor site plan comments, but they're really more detailed related and they shouldn't impact site layout. Um, it doesn't appear that this site has any existing REUs, but we will confirm that during final site plan review. And then I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about our letter or otherwise.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi Stacy, um, I did note that in your memo and um, would the, the size, well, that's kind of different because these are all different lots that they're putting together for sixty-four, sixty-five acres. But um, at what stage, maybe this is a bit, at what stage in the process would you uh, uh, begin to deal with the issue of the REUs?
We usually will see that in detailed engineering and final site plan. So in this phase, it's not, we don't always know that information right now. And it is based on square footage of units, number of units, et cetera. So like the applicant mentioned, it may be less than what we noted in our letter.
And, but from what I'm gathering from your remarks is that you don't really have, uh, see that uh, this is gonna explode our capacity?
No, it shouldn't, um, I know that the capacity is getting very close. Um, that's why we have that metering study coming up. I believe that's planned more for the spring and summer next year. And that will true up our capacity number to give, give us a better idea of what's left. But this um, development shouldn't put us close to it yet, although we are close. I don't want to under, take away from that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for OHM? Then I'm gonna open it up to our public, so if you guys want to um, go.
Turn your seats.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, um, and uh, the table is open to anyone who is here to address the planning commission regarding Ember Grove.
I think a gentleman that spoke up in the regular part. His, his remarks, I think, were.
Were addressed.
Were.
Yeah, but he may have others, yeah.
Pardon me?
He may have other questions.
No, no. His remarks were, which was offense, and then the, I think the, the issue of this uh, wasn't wired.
Yeah, I think. Go ahead, welcome.
Yeah, hi, um, thanks, Todd Stites, I'm a member of Peace Lutheran Church, I am on the board, but I, uh, speaking of personal capacity right now, if you will. Um, we are aware of that connector. Um, I will say, um, it was brought up initially as there's some property, um, you know, being reassigned over to Pulte if this land is through that church property. So we are aware of that connector, the intent would be um, to facilitate connection with the families to, um, you know, during church activities. So we have not worked with anybody as of yet for this, you know, official plan to see what that connector look, looks like. Um, how to, you know, not make it the daily use for folks in, in the housing, you know, for wear and tear on the equipment. Um, but yeah, we're excited to connect with some neighbors, especially with this project versus a more commercial, you know, project in the area and connect with our neighbors and, you know, provide a benefit to the community. So we're looking forward to working with the folks, you know, on the Pulte team. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, and if you could sign in, there'll be a sheet specifically for this public hearing.
Thank you for bringing that up too, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, anyone else that would like to address the planning commission?
Just to be clear, you said that you don't see it as daily use?
Yes, I mean, it is still private property, private church property.
I just want to make sure I agree there.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, I live right next door to uh, the church there.
Do you introduce yourself for us?
Yeah, I'm David Vigo, I live at eighty-four thirty Jackson Road. And um, tentatively selling five acres to the Pulte Home Gate. And um, I'd like to see a fence put up on the back, so I don't want people traipsing all over the back of my yard.
In the back is east, northwest.
You wanna put it up on a screen, I'll show you right where it's at.
We don't have.
We have a problem.
But it would be at the rear of your, yeah, between your property and the.
Well, look at your address on Google Maps.
Yeah.
You're west of the church? You're west of the church?
I am on the west side of the church, yep.
Are, are you the one with the, the old van?
Yep.
Okay.
That's me.
Thank you. So we place it. So you'd be the northwest?
Northeast corner of Parker and Jackson. Where either, yeah, so the north, north side and the side that bucks up to the church, I, I'd like to see a fence put up there because I don't want people coming over there all the time from all these different properties, man, you know?
Yeah.
That's all I gotta say, bud.
All right, and they answered your sewer?
Yeah, I got my answers on that.
Great.
So just sign anywhere on this or what?
Uh. It should say Ever Grove at the top. Kim, could you look at the, someone, uh, our, is there anyone else here that would like to address the planning commission? Welcome, you can come on up.
Couple of questions, comments, uh, my name's Chad Barksdale. Um, you talk about the utilities going up Parker Road, would those utilities be on the west side or east side of Parker Road?
Go ahead and, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be on the east side of Parker.
And then through all the planning, nothing's been talked about traffic or roads going through Jackson and Parker. Is any plan to redesign the traffic pattern or to improve the road conditions that's on Jackson and Parker?
So the Washtenaw County Road Commission has jurisdiction over Jackson Road and Parker Road. They likely will require a traffic study. And so they will determine what impacts, whether there's decelerated lanes, accelerating lanes, if there's additional signaling needed, the road commission will, will determine that.
And then when does that get done? I heard the preliminary, you know, approval, final, when, when does that happen?
Well, it'll be approved during final. Um, but in the meantime, the, the road commission is reviewing these plans, just like we are. They were submitted for them and then we'll start their initial review. Did they, have you submitted for a traffic study?
Yeah, we've done a traffic study, we've submitted it, um, and it's, we haven't gotten preliminary approval yet from the road commission, but it's under review from them, and I think they're actually signed up on the traffic study, but they do it all at once. So we're waiting for their preliminary approval.
You ever concerned about that? I've never seen a traffic study not approved.
Um, concerned, no, I mean, I, I live on.
I'm just letting you know.
No, 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 I, I live on Parker Road, I've been there for thirty years. And I've seen the traffic increase considerably over a thirty-year period of time. Now adding, you know, two hundred and sixty new residences. Yes, I, I do believe that the congestion and the, the issues, I think, will, will increase.
No, I appreciate what you're saying, I'm just seeing my experiences.
Oh, no, I understand that, yeah.
I don't trust that whole system, so I'll leave it at that.
And just to clarify, the traffic study approval is that the counts are correct. It's a factual piece document, and then the road commission, once they accept that, then they weigh in on what improvement. And then the road commission, once they accept that, then they weigh in on what improvements are needed based on the facts. Put forth in the traffic study, yeah. Okay. Uh, anyone else that would like to address the planning commission on Ember Grove in the meeting hall? Okay, if not, go in online. If you could raise your Zoom hand if you'd like to address us. Entertaining a motion to close the public hearing for Ember Grove.
So.
Moved by Moore, uh, supported by Walsh. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, public hearing is closed at seven fifty one. And now we're, uh, moving on. I'm going to open the public hearing for hometown pizza golf simulators. At, uh, seven fifty two, and if you could have the applicant come forward, please.
Hello, from Hunter Comstock.
Alex Womack.
I don't have the presentation, just here to answer any questions.
Okay. You want to just describe what you're doing and?
Yeah, I, I assumed all that information was already given to you guys. I just.
But we just want to hear from you.
Public too.
Yeah, and for the public. They often, yeah, sometimes people don't read.
So we're approved for zoning for, to get golf simulators allowed in C two zoning. So we're just asking for conditional use for golf simulators in, in the back of our pizza business.
Which is fifty, sixty Jackson Road.
And were there any issues that you wanted to address in any of the comments, particularly the fire comments that were?
Yeah, so our, um, in terms of the separation between our pizza restaurant and the, where the golf simulators would be. Um, our architect assured us that, um, intumescent paint, that we can use that as a fire protective coating in between the two. And then the doorway that, all that needs to have is be automatically closing in between the two, which we can easily have that done as well. So that was really the only two concerns that they. Trust with us, so.
Uh, I guess I just have a question that intumescent paint does not equal a two hour firewall.
Yeah, that the architect said that, isn't that what he said about the separation between the two?
Yeah, I just recommended that we use that paint or, well, it has a recommendation on what we do. We can do as well.
Yeah.
Well, the intent is that you would, you would meet the two hour firewall.
Right. Right.
And, okay. Um, any other comments on, at any of the other? Reports, okay. And, uh, any questions?
I have a question. I've not been in your establishment, but I understand you have a pizzeria there.
Yes.
And there's room for people to sit down to eat in, or is that just takeout?
Twelve seats, yeah, very, very small.
On your pizzeria area.
Primarily takeout, yeah, there's just a little bit of.
And are you saying there's another room that you're going to use for the simulator stuff?
There's separate spaces in the back, yes.
Okay.
The same size as the pizza area.
Okay, let me ask this again. So the pizza area has about twelve seats or whatever, twelve tables, or however you got to sit. But is there an additional room that the simulators will go into?
Yes, in, in the back of the building, yes.
So you're doubling your square feet footage, basically, with the pizza place and the simulators? You said it was the same square footage?
Yeah, the pizza area is about sixteen hundred square feet and the simulator would be two thousand ish.
This is new space for you? Or is it?
It's already like we had storage in there, right? Our offices are back there, yeah, so it's just converting it essentially, yeah.
And, um, you know, I was looking at your, um. Your conditional use application packet. And it scared me a bit because when you were here before, I'm familiar with the, the parking. Remember, I, I mentioned that last time. It's a tight area and you're talking about the, all the primary clientele include. Uh. Couple, you have a couple of things here, but casual players and families, youth in high school, golf teams, collegiate players and golf leagues. Senior, seniors, retirees, local businesses hosting private events. You have this, uh, parking space to do that kind of?
The si- the simulator use is mainly in the afternoon when the other places will be closed, the rest of Plaza, so that opens up.
So there's two places that are open in the evening. One is the, uh, the restaurant. Base camp, thank you. Um, the other one is here on Pet Supply as evening hours. Now they're probably not open till nine or two.
They're at the very front two of that.
That's correct, yeah.
So we kind of have that cap. Plus, I guess, the list of all those potential, that's just kind of a variable. People that we could have come in there, not necessarily all at once, but any means like a, like corporate event, it would be. Holiday party for twenty four, twenty staffers or something from a company. It wouldn't be any busier than. That at one point, just because we only are, are going to have the three simulator bases, we can only have so many people anyways.
Do you know how many parking spaces are in there now?
Yeah, we.
On the site plan that we provided for application, there is a parking plan. And there's a breakdown of.
Because it has parking on that as well.
I was just going to ask you that because I can see that all being filled up, twenty four people, but you can also park in that back part too.
Correct, yeah.
So there's ninety one shared spaces.
Ninety one shared spaces in the front.
Twenty four would be, that would be very, I'm not saying it wouldn't happen, it's not going to be all the time either. Mostly, our average booking at my location, Adrian, is four ish people at a time, so for the three bays, that's twelve, just twelve people, not necessarily twenty four. That's, that would be very much our maximum that we would have for the time.
My questions, thank you. Thank you, go to. Kelly Watron.
So as, um, Hunter and Alex said, um, this is a C two zoning at fifty sixty Jackson. They encompassed Suite G. Um, we just approved a text amendment to allow indoor recreation, uh, facilities in C two. That amendment was, um, effective October thirty first. So this is our first, um, application for our conditional use in the C two district. They are providing three golf simulators, uh, as they just mentioned on page five of the site plan. There's a very, um. Good graphic that demonstrates the shared parking and the hours of operation of each tenant. Um, they indicate that, um, based on the current users, a total of a hundred and two spaces would be required. There are ninety five spaces. Um, the under par would require around two spaces per bay, so that's six spaces for the three. The three, uh, simulators. Uh, they also noted that, you know, while they have carry out, a lot of carry out business, not a lot of people are sitting, e- eating pizza. They don't have a lot of space for that. So their, their parking that they have can be accommodated for the simulators while, you know, there's a lot of, um, transient in and out parking, um, for their business as well. Um, in our review, we note, um, that this type of use is consistent with the master plan. They aren't, they aren't providing any exterior changes to the building or the site. So no modifications, um, to the existing built site are, are proposed. So if this conditionals were approved, uh, site plan is not required. Um. The only question that I had in addition to the fire marshal, um, information was the hours of operation. Um, so if you can just let us know what those are, um, we will make probably that a condition of the, of the conditional use approval. Um, and the fire marshal, uh, comments can be, should be at a condition of approval, but they will be rectified during zoning compliance. When they, um, are applying for their building permits.
I don't understand what you just said.
So the fire marshal will review the building drawings when it comes in for zoning compliance. Uh, all, everyone that, anyone in the township that needs a building permit has to go to Washtenaw County. But prior to going to Washtenaw County, they have to come to the township and get zoning compliance. The county won't approve any building permits without the township's, um, sign off check because it's our, so we know. At that point in time, when they apply for zoning compliance, the fire marshal will review the building plans to ensure that they meet all his fire codes. And it won't get pushed, it won't, we won't allow you to go to the county to get your building permits until the fire marshal is satisfied with the building plans.
So what she also said was, we would have to make that a condition on any approval that we.
I don't think, I don't think you necessarily have to, but you can. Because it's going to happen.
I think this memo is pretty clear from the fire department. What I've heard today doesn't really satisfy that, but, okay, I can deal with it that way.
Yeah, I mean, he, he's not going to.
Motion tonight.
Happy to answer any other questions.
O H M?
So we technically did not recommend this conditional use in our letter from November fourteenth. We had one comment that was related to the REUs and I have since. Um, emailed with the applicant about it. They're anticipating needing two REUs, but there is not any existing associated with this property. So it's more of a formality than anything that they request them just for the record. Um, but we, we only didn't recommend it because we won't be seeing it again, so it. I would be able to work with them administratively before it goes to the board, should the planning commission feel like this is ready to move on.
Stacy, did I hear you right? Did you say that the applicant is seeking two REUs?
That's what's anticipated, yes.
Any other questions for O H M? All right, uh, thank you. Uh, we'll, uh, ask if there's anyone here that would like to, uh, approach the planning commission on the park. Seeing no one, is there anyone online? Entertaining a motion to enclose the public hearing. Moore and Walsh? Was that you that said?
I think it was both the bobs.
Okay, the bobs. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Right, uh, public hearing is closed at eight oh three. Okay. You, and, uh, we have no unfinished business, so we're going to be going to new business, which, uh, brings back Ember Grove or, um. Discussion and possible action. I do have an additional question for the applicant, and that is, can you, uh, go through, as we were talking with the, the church and so forth, but also getting to the playground. Uh, the connectivity between and within and around the development that you're seeing or planning on.
Sure, so we'll have new sidewalks along Jackson Road. And then all of the roads will have sidewalks on both sides as you connect from the single family homes to, uh, the townhomes on the northeast. There'll be sidewalks along both sides of the road here. You'll be able to cut back south from the townhomes to connect to, uh, the park here. Uh, we also wanted the circular loop throughout the project, uh, which is why you see some of the tree removal through here. Uh, we feel like, you know, people like to walk in a circle, connect through. Uh, so as you make your way west, you connect to the, uh, villas, that's what we call them for our, our duplexes. Also sidewalks on both sides of the road. You can connect to the cul-de-sac here, and this is our walkway, uh, that goes through the woods and is more grass along there. And that will have, uh, the benches along that aspect. And then you'll be able to connect to apartment road on the west side and we'll be, we have a new sidewalk. On Parker Road here as well. And in terms of anything in writing, we can work with the church on talking about what that entrance would look like. I can coordinate with them and, and our representative.
Okay, did you want to address the gentleman's concern about the fencing along his property line? Perhaps you could identify that on the?
Uh, on the southwest portion, uh, formidable to fencing in that area.
It's kind of a wetland back there anyway. There's dense trees.
Other?
Did you have anything more?
And those were, um, the, some of the just clarifying things and then I can go after other people, like some other items.
I did have a question. It had to do with, um. How you're building close to some of the existing wetlands, and I know you've made every effort to. Uh, not encroach on most of it. But what are the soil, are the, are the soils of a quality that you can construct houses on? I mean, it's, the soils underneath are, are various, um. Mixes. I, I'm not sure what it is right there at those town, at the villas, especially in the center. No, no problem building on those soils? Or you have to fill or?
We currently have no concerns with, uh, home construction. We've seen more soil like this one, so, yeah. We're not going to have wet basements because you're not going to be putting basements in. No, wet basements are due to groundwater, and so we'll obviously make sure that we look into that during the final site plan, but we have no concerns with the current information we have. With groundwater infiltration or with, uh, unsuitable soils due to levels, no concerns. At this time.
Actually soils would be their soils report?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, and, and typically a soils report has, then the recommendations for foundations, and it, it has to do primarily with expenses. Uh, the expense of, of foundations and, and soil conditions. Yeah, go ahead.
Single family condominiums, you're requesting a setback of five feet instead of fifteen. How common is that for this type of development?
I would say, this is some of the newer product that we're doing for this type of single family home. I think we're trying to get into more of that available pricing. And making the lot smaller, uh, makes it a bit more, uh, cost efficient for the buyer. So the wider lots we go, the less of them are, the more expensive it gets. So we're bringing in more, uh, forty foot lots with thirty foot homes there, uh, which does reduce that setback.
Do you have this any place else?
Um, I'd have to look back. Um, it, it is, it is common.
Okay.
Um, in other communities, but I don't know offhand what the setbacks are for other PBs we've approved. Yeah, my comment for that, I think there's, I, I mean. One, this is in the water and sewer district. They're on the lower end of the density right now. And the ability, I mean, price point is based on density. And they are doing clustering to maximize the density and balancing the, yeah.
The math is if it's a forty foot lot and you're saving twenty feet between each because it's ten instead of thirty, you're squeezing, I, I get the math, I'm just wondering. If it exists or not, or if we're creating.
It, it's, it's very, it's really, it, it's common in a lot of areas where you're trying to, um. Cluster.
Right, I guess my, my follow up.
Is in SIO. Do we have it anywhere? Is that your question?
Well, and again, I, I just was curious. My other question that gets. Parking is going to be on one side, not the side with fire department or with fire hydrants. Given the density and two driveways that are two cars wide. Have you looked at just how much open space there's going to be for visitors? Because I'm guessing on some of these, it's going to be pretty tight. Until you get further down where the road curves. If someone's in one of the, almost any one of these units and has four or five people driving in. I'm just wondering if you've actually looked and figured out how much parking potentially there is along the road without blocking someone's driveway.
Oh, we face this question with a lot of our proposals, um, even when they have parking on one side of the street, uh, you have the two car garage, you get the two cars on the driveway. Uh, we know that if you're having a big Thanksgiving event, you might have people stringing it down the street. I think our typical response is, we don't want to, you know, lose our ninety nine percent worrying about that one percent of what happens when there's a big host of events. Uh, so there is on street parking. Every now and then people may have to park a little bit further down.
I, I get that, I'm just. I, I get that, I'm just, cause it wasn't, I don't know how close the driveways are to each other, so between the two driveways, particularly on the single family, is there a space for someone or on that side of the road that it's allowed? Or are they gonna be so tight that you have to find a different spot? That's, that's the only thing I'm really looking for.
Yeah, there, there are at least these spaces for even on the, the tightest lot right next to each other, you know, so at least there's at least one car between each of them. Twenty plus.
I have a, go ahead. Go ahead, you go ahead. Look, I, I did one already.
Mr. Walsh referred to the single family homes as condos. I hadn't thought about them. Are they connected, are they condos?
Uh, it's the way that it's parceled out and so it, and put in the homeowners association contracts, uh, it's part of, Pulte has the land and then they're buying the lot. You see, single family condominium layouts are, are much more typical in today's developments versus.
Yeah, I know what they are. I didn't, I just didn't know they were condos, okay.
Yeah, so they'll be considered single family condos.
Okay, and are they, um, are they connected to each other or are they separate?
The.
The condos.
Uh, with the single family homes, there's, uh, ten feet apart. So five feet of site setback on each.
So just to clarify, the single family homes are on their own lots? It's just, it's just.
It's a psych condo.
It's a psych condo, it's, it's just an ownership. It's just the way it's owned, so, but you can look at them like it's just a single family lot. They are going to own their whole property with their home on it.
Whereas their separate yards.
They're gonna have separate yards, et cetera. But exactly, but the duplexes and the townhomes will only own the unit them, themselves. Okay, that's the distinction. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna make a little comment on the sustainability, the solar ready and so forth. Knowing that solar ready is in the proposed residential code, which obviously is in the courts right now. But what you're saying is a sustainability piece is already in the code. Once that code is resolved in, in the court, and it's also in the proposed, um, the, the next round of codes. So, um, I just sort of say, that's sort of a, I consider that status quo as opposed to a sustainability benefit. Um, the other thing that I'd really like to push is because we are, you can tell we're, um, we are concerned about our REUs. And there is, um, if, if, uh, P U Ds would commit to installing water sense plumbing fixtures as opposed to just the code compliant, um, plumbing fixtures, that would save our water use. And so when we, when we do the truing up, um, there, it wouldn't, it, your development would not use all the REUs and there'd be, uh, additional, um, water supply for um, some other developments in the water sewer area. Um, I don't, you know, I'd like to see, kind of look into that because that would be really helpful to the township in the long term.
Are those expensive? Those fixtures expensive?
No. And they, they're, it's both, uh, um, a standard for performance and a reduction of the, the, um, water use. So you're not sacrificing performance for the savings.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, is that like less water pressure or something?
Yeah, it's, so it's, um, it, just for example, just, it's one point six gallons per flush for code for a toilet. It's one point two eight for water sense and some of them, now when you get into the dual flush, sometimes they're more expensive, but typically the one point two eights are. So, and then shower fixtures, um, um, instead of two point five, there's a range of different water sense ones. And again, the performance has to be there, um, as, as well as the reduction in, in water use. So that would really, uh, help the township out. And, um, also I think the all-electric option is, is very important and and the, I, I don't know what the resistance is for the energy efficient appliances. Why that wouldn't be a standard package in, yeah.
Will you do the energy efficient packages? Uh, the electric versus gas, uh, tough to commit to electric on that, speaking with procurement, learning about that aspect. Um, and so, uh, I think for, for heating, gas is the option, but then the interior appliances, uh, Pulte does have some more energy efficient appliances that buyers can consume.
I guess what I, what I guess what I'm saying is, I, I would like to see, uh, you know, if you're talking about true sustainability pieces and helping us meet our carbon neutrality targets, it would be promoting all-electric options. And then, um, stand, being standardized on water sense and energy star appliances. So that's, those are both standards that you can, you know, you could commit to. And I, and I am gonna push on that because I think it's, you know, it, what we're doing then is making our, our target of carbon neutrality much harder to achieve because you're adding, uh, you know, carbon emissions to something that we're trying to, um, reduce.
Are you looking for heating to also be?
Well, all-electric would be, mean all-electric.
Right, I don't know that you heard that.
Option.
Heating as well as appliances.
Speaking with our procurement, that one was a little bit tougher for Pulte to work with.
I, I, I mean, an all-electric option. An option, you know, I agree that, you know, you gotta work on the marketing piece, but not to have an option that's all-electric is, is an issue for me.
And if I could ask a question, electric heating, would that be like a heating pump?
Heat pump. And then you're, and then what it is, is your, your upgrade becomes something closer to a passapower or, you know, some, some other, a, a truly improved envelope as opposed to, you know, just me and code. So.
I know the heat, heating pump options are more expensive, but do you, do, do, does Pulte think that that's a good selling point? Some people are into sustainability options, some buyers.
In our conversations with procurement, it was, hopefully still maintaining gas as the typical, uh, heating source from what they found.
Yeah, tell them that Robinson Brothers is, is offering some all-electric pack. And that's a major competition for you guys. So it is possible and they're doing it.
Here we are.
And I'm not asking you to do it standard, I'm asking you for that, that option so people can choose in, in all-electric and then with.
Yeah, we're, we're more than happy to, to look into that and see what that entails. I'm not well versed in what it means to just give an option versus actually doing it. We'll certainly look into that. Report back.
Just comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, so when we, um, evaluate this, um, one of the standards is the proposed development shall minimize any negative environmental impacts of the subject site. Um, I think we're getting to a point where we have to protect more natural features. I'm not keen on eliminating, uh, these wetlands. And taking, and our, I guess our ordinance allows, uh, detention ponds to be considered open space. I don't really consider that to be open space. Uh, that's not where people, that's not where they recreate. So I see a project that's just trying to maximize as many houses as you can get on this. And I would prefer to see something that's less, um, destructive to the environment. Trees, wetlands.
Other comments?
Boy, the conversation started.
You were stunning.
I would.
Don't invite me to a party.
I would just like to emphasize the trees aspect and, uh, I was speaking earlier, ahead of when I should have about grading and keeping the tree lines that exist as much as possible between the single family lots. You've done a great job around some of the other areas. The wetlands, I see that you have minimized the intrusions and I think that there were, I'd like to hear more about which ones you need to have permits for and, and that would go through the county first, is that correct? State, I'm sorry, the state, and that's the application for the township as well, so. Which of the wetlands will you need to get the permits for?
Well, we would need Eagle Department for the wetland impacts. Um, the majority of those due to that farm ditch are, um, regulated, that is summarized on sheet four of the application. There, most of them are regulated, most, yes, most of the impacts are regulated. Which we know going in, we'll have to give Eagle.
Just a, a question to follow up on the wetlands. As you're evaluating them, um, is there, um, what, what quality wetlands are they? And it looks like there's, um, and when you look at that, I mean, roadway is, is one thing, but are there some? But by eliminating a few units, are there wetland impacts that you could remove?
Well, we're, we're fighting, ye- yes, there are qualities. The larger wetland impact is the structure, which is a poor quality compared to the forest. Well, and ones that we're protecting, so there was thought put into the, the lower quality ones versus the higher quality ones. As, as far as, sorry, what was the?
Okay, as far as our, i- if you looked at, you know, you're, you know, you said you've, you've balanced what you feel you've balanced the number of units versus the wetland impact. Let's say if, if we came to you, we're coming to you and saying, how many, how could you save more of the wetlands or keep the one other wetland intact? Perhaps maintain another wetland, um, what, how many units would be impacted by that?
Yeah, so the other thing that we're, we're fighting up against with regard to just removing units and saving wetlands is, um, as part of your master plan, the number of unit. Then the four units an acre is a part of the residential master plan requirement. So we actually put units on the plan to try and meet the density, so. Prescribed for the higher, higher residential, so.
Or you could, you could combine more of the duplexes and make more townhomes than duplexes. That would be another way of, of.
Certainly, there's a reason, there's a reason why it's a balance there too, cause if we did have a way, we probably, what do you do to townhomes here? It's much, as much, um, just cause we feel the market is more into the other two housing products. But, but we, that's something that maybe we can talk about ourselves. I don't know if we're gonna save a ton of wetlands by, by doing that and still having the four units an acre. I think we stayed out of the high quality as much as possible, but we certainly look into that as we move to.
So as I understand that, there are six wetlands that are gonna be impacted and there are eight that are gonna be left in place.
We have six sections in red, however, there's a couple of them where it's half impacted outside.
Okay.
So do you wanna talk a little bit about when there's a, a wetland impact, what, what the permits typically require?
So there are, one, two, three, four, five. Nine wetlands, individual wetlands on this property totaling two acres-ish. Um, uh, if you look at sheet, if you're, I'm looking at sheet seven of their site plan package, it, it describes each wetland, it gives them a name. It talks about the amount of acres that they encumber and it talks about, um, the proposed impacts. So of nine, one, two, three, four, five are impacted. Um, it, you know, as Eagle, typically, they're gonna have to submit, um, an application to Eagle. Eagle is going to provide whether or not they're gonna allow those impacts to each individual wetland. We typically at the township, if Eagle permits it, it's, it's typical that we, we would allow, allow it if they received the state permit. Two acres and they're impacting, you know, a quarter of that, point six four. I mean, that's, I, I think they've, they've done a good job. Um, you know, impacting as little as possible in order to keep the density. But it looks to me from the stable, every wetland is regulated by Eagle and the township, so.
Is there mitigation and what they get the permits, do they have?
They would have to mitigate, um, typically, we, we want mitigation onsite. I don't know if we've gotten that far.
We certainly have areas to mitigate onsite, in particular, southeast corner of existing wetlands. Our preference is to pay into the bank for Eagle.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, our preference is to pay in a bank for the requirements of Eagle, but we're happy to work with the township. The preference is, um, onsite mitigation.
I, I think definitely, uh, uh, speaking, I mean.
What is onsite mitigation?
Okay, so what it means when you impact a wetland, you have to mitigate it and provide for a wetland elsewhere. Okay, so it isn't, there, there, there isn't a net loss of wetlands, it's just a matter of where that mitigation takes place.
And remove on the north east corner, but you're remo- removing it, but then you're building it down on the southwest corner.
And so if you can actually turn, you know, little pieces of wetland into a larger wetland, it could have a net beneficial site impact. And, and, you know, so looking at that would be, I think, in my mind.
So we were, uh, I'm sorry. So, um, I, I'm very happy that you've come to us with this proposal. And I say that because in the overall scheme of things, um, I'd like to lock in a nice residential development in that area rather than commercial road all the way to Parker. That, having said that, obviously there's some issues. We're here, we like natural. And we were just participating in the Huron River Watershed Council meeting. And I remember one of the, one of the individuals from there said, once the, the woods are gone, they're gone forever. And it impacted me because that's so true. Once the development comes in, that's it. You know, um, it's neither here nor there about you, but I'm just gonna give you, you understanding of how I look at things. You know, I'm looking at the whole picture of the township. And I like what I see with your development, but I'm also looking at how your development impacts what we have in our community as well as how wonderful your development is, okay? Um, and so I just kind of felt like I wanted to explain that because the questions are, if you notice, they're, they're around some cherished ideas in our community with regard to natural areas, et cetera.
So how does a developer, because, you know, the township has been pushing high density and I'm, I'm pretty sure I heard here it says, you know, this is under what we've been asking for. So how's, how does a developer come in and, and, cause nobody can save a tree more than I can? And save trees, but also do high density. Explain that to me, how you think that that can happen with this? So you want them to go up?
No, I didn't say that. You said, how can you?
Of course you can, but, but, you know, on that property? I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, it's just like, I'm just shocked.
I think it's, I think it's, I think this is the world we live in, we're all adults and decisions are difficult. Life is complex, it's gray, it's not always black and white, so there are trade-offs.
So which do you want here? You, you'd like them to hold on to the trees more than, than the density? Because look, I, I personally don't like the development at all. You know, I do not like this development at all, but yet at the same time, you know, this is what the township is trying to ask for, is this high-density stuff. So I'm, I'm trying to understand what, what everybody, including Laura and, and the board, you know, what they want. And, and that's what we're trying to present to them too.
We want it all. Now, having said that, I'm well aware, because I'm an adult too, that I can't have it all. But that doesn't mean I don't have priorities surrounding different things. So we'll work through it, you know, we're here to work with Pulte to make it a good development.
Yeah, I'd like to just sort of pick up on a couple of things. I think at this end of, of Jackson Road, because we're on the west end, it is transitioning to more rural. But it is within the water and sewer district, and so I think the density of four units per acre is appropriate. I wouldn't wanna go less and I think there, with the marketing, et cetera, going more might be problematic. And it, it's a nice transition, you know, into the more rural. I hear that the, the mitigate, I think the, if, if there's a little more homework done with the mitigation onsite so that we can actually enhance one of the existing wetlands, you know, and even though we're impacting a few of the other ones. You can, you know, if there is that existing kind of fence row, if you will, along that if you look at the grading and could commit to some more, you know, maintaining of that fence row, especially some of the more mature trees along that fence row. Then the, helping us out with the, our water budget, you know, and providing those options, committing to, you know, the water sense, the energy star, and then the option of an all-electric option, because, and, and it's not saying that you have to, you know, that people have to buy it. It, it just needs to be available for folks, because I do think we're in a, a point where we do need to educate and market to people and provide those options. That's kind of where I'm at.
So I just wanted to finish my comments.
Go ahead.
So I will be approving the preliminary site plan today with the idea that I know we have some stuff to iron out, period.
Okay, yeah, see, I'd like to see one more pass, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So Laura, would you mind sharing what you don't like about this?
I'm, this, this, this just goes back to, you know, the way the township is kinda going in movement and that is, you know, extreme high-density. And, you know, because I'm more about less density and having more open space, that's just what I like, especially out on that western end. But I'm also a developer, so, you know, I would probably look at this in the same way that they do. So, you know, that's where it's like, there's this conflict that's constantly going on, you know, here. And, you know, I just can't quite figure out what it is that's, you know, we're trying to really accomplish when we say, you know, we want high-density, but we want you to save all these trees and we want you to save all these natural resources. That just doesn't jive, it doesn't, just doesn't really happen here, you know.
I think the part of the problem, Laura, is that we want more residential in our township. And to get more residential, we have to make some serious choices about that. It comes with a cost. Yeah, and then at the same time, we're trying to make it nice and preserve stuff. And, and, and it's a, it's a, it's a back and forth.
It's more than just moving a house here and there to save three trees or, or 12 trees on a tree line, you know. It's more than that, you know, in my opinion, you know, because to me, you know, this is extreme density, especially on the far west side of our township. So to me, you know, just, that's just my opinion.
No, your opinion's important.
Now, since it does fall in with what we, and it's well under it, then yeah, then I feel like we need to approve this also. Yes, would it be nice to have, you know, the electric option for, you know, the, the three homeowners out of however many are in here? How many are there again? 250 that are gonna choose all-electric because it's probably what's gonna happen because of the cost? You know, that they're gonna, you know, but at least you checked the box and said, hey, you want all-electric, here you go, you know, you can have it. You know. Would I choose that again? No, you know, I'd want, I'd want gas because while on these really cold days, I know that that heat pump's not gonna do it for me.
I have one that's working just fine.
I know you, you, that's.
You're the first person I know.
Exactly, you are the first person.
It works just.
You're the second one because there's no way.
No, they don't.
Not like, not like my gas, not like my.
It takes a while.
It takes a while for your blood to get used to it?
I'd be happy to discuss it with you, someday when I start it.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, yeah, if I live south, you know, okay, I'm gonna do that.
Hey, you know, the highest adoption rate is Maine. For Eagle, by the way, just FYI, highest adoption rate.
That's great, I'm, I'm surprised with that.
Yeah, well, part of it is they figured out which ones to use. Anyway, okay, so, so Rhonda and Bob, I'm trying to figure out where we are with the, the motion, so.
I agree with an awful lot of what Laura just said, that this, this high-density building, I have lived here for so long. I live on a farm, I have watched the development occur and occur and occur and occur, and I don't like it, but some of it you can't stop. And I'm glad that we, we do not have the ability for anything like this to go in where I live. We're built up now, there's no more land available, thank God. The farmland that's available is preserved. Is this ideal? No, do I like the way these structures look? No, do I like some of the things we're talking about? No, but it sounds like that's what the township wants. So how do we make it as tenable as we can? But make it so that they can afford to do what they need to do, because somebody else is gonna come in if, if we run them out and we might like it even less.
Because, and then I'm afraid that, you know, we approve it here, it goes to your board and they all go, no way, I don't like this at all, this is awful, no. You know, so it's like, I, I feel like what we do then is.
That's their job.
I know it's their job, but.
We, we do ours, and I'm gonna take a simpler approach because I'm aligned with you. Before I came on to the master plans, X number of years, it's probably continued. We've decided that Jackson Road and Valley District is where density is going to be.
They're the most expensive land.
This is where we're putting the density, I happen to like the fact that I live on four acres and I don't have someone ten feet away from me.
Yep, five feet.
Well, yeah.
Five on each side.
Yeah, five on each side, but we also need price points to get new people into the township. This accomplishes that, it accomplishes what the township said. Is there a better plan? Yes, we've given some ideas, could there be something worse? Yes, but at this point, I'm with the thing of let's move forward. You guys know what's important to the people here, this is the preliminary, I've got no problem with the preliminary. I would just emphasize one thing Bob said, only I'd say it a different way. I am not for high-density except in the water sewer district. This is there, even though it's on the very western side of the township, it's our water sewer district. So I just, I wanted to make that distinction, it's not because it's on the west side and all we have is rural, I mean, rural beyond it, that's, that's not the point, we're, this is our, our water.
That's our boundary line, we don't have anything beyond west, because that's our boundary.
So this is where we can do higher density.
So I'm, I'm hearing that there are folks that are ready to pass, recommend with some conditions and a couple of people that wanna have another response, is there?
Is that what I heard you say, that you would like to see this again with additional data from them, or not data, but changes?
Just responses to the, the concerns that we brought up.
Such as grading, such as trees, such as the options for all.
Mitigation onsite.
Mitigation onsite, those are the.
And the clear connectivity commitment, you know, within the site, like you were talking about, that there'd be a trail, you know.
You're talking about the trail that goes to the church?
Well, I think you can work out the commitment with the.
Absolutely right.
Yeah, at the church and then the commitment with the request for the fencing and then it just clearly delineating the circulation onsite, yeah. Not beyond the, beyond the sidewalks where you're connecting to that open, the open space.
That'd be something we could provide for the board.
I feel like those things are kinda minor, in my opinion, you know, that.
Not the grading, not the trees. I mean, you either can or can't.
The big thing is, is the, well, yeah, exactly, you either can or you can't, and this is, this is what we said, we are approving this based on this, this, this and this and this. Send it to the board and then they move forward.
I mean, they could, they could, I, I guess they can either come back here or they can, it can, the conditions, they could work on it before they went to the board. That could be the other option, yeah.
So I would just like to say, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
Oh, we can do the document with the church as a condition of approval to be provided for the board trustees.
I was just gonna say that they could go another route and just put houses on that property. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be as much density, if they went through our zoning, it wouldn't be as much density.
One per acre. Not really, you know.
No, I, I, I hear you, I agree, I agree with some of what you're saying.
Permitted by the, by Eagle to take out all of the wetlands now, we're talking about one per acre. So, no, they can't.
Okay, so you can still work around, if they did a PUD, they'd still work around the, the wetlands? You know, so maybe they're not putting one per acre, but they're, you know, it's darn close, but whatever, I mean.
Anyway, this is what we're doing.
So Laura, I'm glad I asked what your opinion is, because I really, I agree in support of what you're saying.
I figured you would because of what you said too.
Yeah, it's, I'm trying to make the best out of this situation. But I, I agree, I mean, I get lots of feedback about maintaining the rural character. And, like, this is.
I think this is something that I think is, is a good discussion, but I, I guess I feel like if we're investing in the water and the sewer district, we wanna make the, we want to, you know, concentrate that, that density and it within that, because it's also, you know, the as we look at public transit, as we look at, you know, other services, this is sort of our, our service area within Seo Township. And the ability to balance that with, then, you know, we had talked about reducing the bonuses and so forth outside the sewer and water district and to, you know, so that's really our compromising is.
We looked at not allowing PUDs outside the Jackson Road corridor.
Right, and, and having no density bonuses. And, and the density bonuses except the ones that we have to have from the state, which are the response to clustering, so, you know, it's.
You don't have to allow density bonuses, yeah, but, okay.
Yeah, the clustering has, there's a little density bonus.
So we started down this road, maybe almost two years ago, revising our PUD ordinance. And we had a lot of discussion about this, and I for one was like, no PUDs outside of the Jackson Road corridor. Just to give you some background on that, because, because of the, so let me just finish, to preserve our rural areas. So that's, I think, what Jan is referring back to.
Did you hear what I had just said to Laura? I asked her, I said, is that legal? I don't think that's legal, because what, PUDs, stopping PUDs outside of Jackson Road.
It's more the density.
It's a state way of to develop, this is where, this is where like developing, you know, I don't think you quite understand like the processes that are put in place for how to develop. And so, I don't think, I think if we were to say.
Let's, let's take this loss for right now. Yeah, let's.
So let me just freeze that, so as I understand it, we can have our own zoning regulations and is it, is it your, or do you agree with that? That if we were to say PUDs could not be off?
I don't think you can say they can't, you can't allow a PUD, any, I mean, it's a, it's a reason, it's a zoning category. I think you can have different PUD criteria depending on the location in the township. I don't know that you can dis-ban a PUD.
But it's the density that the PUD allows, see, so you deal with it that way, as opposed to banning a certain.
I'm, so back to our.
Our dilemma here, yes.
So my point of view is, I see some public benefits, I don't think they're flushed out enough. I would discount some of them and this is why I would prefer not to deal with this tonight, so that you can go ponder what else you can, what other public benefits you could contribute.
So you're ready to vote, you're, you wanna see it again?
I could vote with conditions.
I could go either way.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I can vote with conditions or if we wanna bring them back, I'm willing to go that route as well.
I could vote with conditions, but, you know, hey, you know, I'm also about sweetening the pot. I could vote with conditions.
I'd like to see it one more time, I want, I want a commitment.
So you'd like to.
I never, I've not heard them say that they're not committed, that, you know.
Well, they haven't said how they would commit, some of the things that we asked for.
We would tell them, those were the conditions.
I think it can make sense, I mean, we've had some pretty good dialogue today. Or I feel that way this evening, and maybe we should postpone the hea, not the hearing, but the. We have new business, yeah. This evening, so that we can all think about it, Pulte can think about how they can respond to different things that we brought up today. I would be favorable to that.
Okay, I think we have more of a consensus at the table, bring it back.
There was one other item that we've discussed, and I think it was you, Bob, that brought it up, that was sound barrier to the freeway, was that you? And I don't know whether you can consider that in this next go-around, if it didn't get brought up again.
Yeah, because we just had the experience with Heritage Woods, where they had their entire site approved and then they said, oops, there's too much sound coming from the express. They thought it was a, and they're building a, on a berm, an eight-foot sound barrier, on a berm.
By the freeway is why they're doing it.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
Is this property above the freeway? It's along 94, is it?
It's south of 94.
I understand that, but isn't the property.
The elevation higher?
It isn't much elevation.
Do you, do you know?
No, and there's a big tree buffer there and, and Pulte has developed long highways before, so we don't plan to put any barrier there. If we did, obviously, we'd have to come back to you to get a giant wall.
There is a little more space separated in the, the one.
Yeah, so we don't have concerns on the development side and marketing side?
When we look at these, we talk about whether we want a protective barrier or not. In some cases, people find that those spots are less, there's less of a premium price on those locations, so those are a little bit more affordable.
There is a much more substantial, yes, mature wooded area in this.
On the north side, yeah.
Which is one of the reasons. I guess if I could comment on, am I allowed to, I'm in, or is it just for discussion?
It's normally more, more above or just. It's not really more, more about board discussion, but go ahead.
Oh, no, I don't want to, I don't want to bring up Robert's floor.
That's what we needed to say, what you needed to say.
It's, it's just board discussion right now.
But you were given the floor, go ahead if you'd like.
Okay, uh, obviously we would prefer to do um a motion with uh conditions to move forward. Uh, I believe a lot of the smaller items like the fencing, um, uh, or something the other way.
Looking into the energy.
Yeah, energy appliances, we can look into. We do have, we do have a number of more meetings to go through. Um, some of the concerns about um wetlands and saving trees, particularly along the hedgerow, a lot of that, it's tough to uh, I guess, figure out without a grading plan and we get into more details as we go through that in the final site plan. Uh, when I was talking with our land developer, particularly on those hedgerows, uh when we go into areas where there's that narrow portion of, when they're out there, they can save they want to save what they can save. Uh, we have a particular case like that in Plymouth. Uh, but at this phase, um, it's tough for them to discern, we can save this tree or that tree until we get to uh, final where we have the grading plan and the tree, uh, the tree survey where we know the exact portions. So for us, you know, right now, we're at the four unit per acre density per the master plan, which I know is, the density along Jackson Road is contentious. You know, you want to preserve the rural characters to the north, concentrated along Jackson. We feel we're doing that. We feel like four units per acre is appropriate per the master plan and the location. You know, we're not coming in with eight units an acre and cramming it in there. We are at the minimum per meeting in that sort of like for the PUD. So uh, we would really prefer to move forward with conditions, given that some of these concerns and details of we need to get to final so that we can drill down into more of those details is our preference.
You all understand that the whole situation with the trees because like you go in there and you say, okay, we're gonna save these trees. And then when they go and grade, oh shit, we can't save, these trees are going to die. They'll save them, but then they die. They die in two years, three years, five years, or what have you, because it just is gonna happen. There's, and so, that's where I want you to understand, like, you try to save the trees, but yet at the same time, you can't. I don't know. You can't save all of them or you can't, you can't save five, five of them or what have you, but you know.
No, I don't think anybody's advocating for going in and clear cutting the entire property. I don't think anybody's saying that.
I just want you guys to kind of understand from what it, what it takes, you know.
Thank you. You know, I, I do know that.
Yeah, I know you do.
But they aren't going to do it if you don't see what, and I see your point too, and that's that you can't get commit, you can't commit until you can actually do the grading studies, do the tree surveys.
And, and you want to have some it, it's, it's kind of cat and mouse because you, you need to have, um, you, you want to have some sort of commitment from the township that it's, you know, that the basic layout, et cetera, is, is okay.
And if I may, it's not that, just because we want it, it's a pretty typical process, but it also makes some common sense to
Have you looked at the, at the mitigation on site? Because I think that could be a real benefit.
Mitigation on site.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have a, a larger area next to the existing well in the southeast.
By the circle?
Yeah.
Right.
The court.
And our point is, we'll be back in front of you again. Uh, for us to drill into some of these details, it seems like you're concerned about though, I will say we need to be able to get more detailed engineering to be able to provide more concrete answers on those.
Why is mitigating on site so important to you because enlarging the, the, the wetland?
Can we leave it and then just add it as a concern because I'm, I'm trying to I hear you. I think we can put the concerns and conditions or concerns in. I'm just trying to note them down. So we've got wetland mitigation, tree preservation, church connection approval, neighborhood, neighbor fence. We've got appliance slash utility options promoting all electric.
And a commitment to the water sense.
So wetland mitigation, neighbor fence. All electric. What are the other ones, Bob?
Doesn't include um an intangible of additional public benefit.
Yeah, that should be answered too. If, if I may understand, I know you disagree with one of the six public benefits we're listing. But we're in the arc and raising an amount to the sewer, which was, we heard is the number one concern in the area. So if, if, I just want to make sure I'm clear that you're saying that's not enough. That's a board decision.
Yeah, that's It is, it is, it is a board decision. It is a board decision. We don't, we don't negotiate the public benefits. I think we're saying that and this is a board of trustee member saying that
You may want to consider.
You may want to consider uh more, uh, more, things that are more truly beneficial um as a, as a PUD. Because I'll tell you right now, with the, the transit, um, we're having issues funding, you know, transit along fully along Jackson Road, Jackson Road Court and uh, uh, existing wise, I mean, we're working through it, but you know, that's another piece of, um, you know, the, the idea is that the Jackson Road corridor from Wagner to Parker is you know, public transit, higher density, all of these, all of these things. So it's our sort of more urban core um to the, to the township.
My transit, the bus
Yeah, and it's waived at that point.
We'll certainly commit to work on.
And I, I think I've misrepresented the truth in our last, when you did your presentation. The wave bus does not go there now.
I spoke with the representative, uh, and she said that for our development to go in and we did the stop, that they would work on the routing to
They'll work on it if we pay for it, for sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so you, you might be talking to the right wrong party.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the public benefit comes to the township not to waive and they can't come into any routing um unless
Someone has to pay for it.
That's right.
We agree to pay for it, so that's an issue. We're just trying to, you know, that's an issue outstanding.
So that might be an area for public benefit. We're, we're in a deficit.
Okay, yeah, okay, we've got, we've got a volunteer for a motion.
This is the Ember Grove preliminary PUD, O A dash PUD number two four zero zero six and PSP number two four zero one seven. Based upon the information received from the applicant reflected in the minutes of this meeting, planning commission finds the Ember Grove preliminary PUD plan received by the township meets qualification for consideration as a PUD as outlined in section thirty-six dash two four five C of the zoning ordinance. Based upon the information received by the applicant reflected in the minutes uh, of this meeting, the planning commission finds the Ember Grove preliminary PUD plan received by the township on date meets the findings pursuant to thirty-six dash two four nine D of the zoning ordinance and recommends approval to the township board for the action on the preliminary plan. Making this determination, the following conditions shall apply. One, concerns noted in planner's review dated November fourth, twenty twenty-five. Does that need to be updated for the December one you did?
It's November fourth, it's on.
Okay. Concerns noted in the engineer's review dated October twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Three, concerns noted in the meeting, including but not limited to wetlands mitigation
On site.
On site.
Thank you.
Church connection approval privacy fence for the neighbor in the southeast corner of Jackson and Parker, or northeast corner of Jackson and Parker. Appliance slash utility options promoting all electric. Church, let's commit our examination and make any option available for water sense fixtures. Okay, are you gonna modify that? Tree preservation.
No, not just tree preservation, but looking into grading and um tree, existing tree lines that can be
Additional tree preservation. Is there support?
I support it.
Support by Hendo? Roll call vote.
Walsh, yes. Fletcher?
Yes.
Hendo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Bram?
Uh, I have to say no because I wanted another pass.
Hyde?
Yes.
Cobertson?
No, because I want another pass.
Mission carries five two.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Neither were
I still want to know what you're to do with that half story. Half story two and a half stories.
A medical condition. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, moving on to our, uh, under par.
Guys, you're so inspiring. How to agree to disagree.
All right. Okay, the comments, where are people at?
I'm good with this. I think the key things are the fire department. That's gonna be handled before they go forward. Yeah, that's it for me.
Yeah.
I, I'm good with it. Uh, if you have too many cars, your landlords could get
And your neighbors will be upset, yeah. But it does, does put a bit of parking on that side.
If we, if we approve this
Are you agreeing?
The fire, fire marshal still has to review it.
Except for the fire marshal stuff, yeah. So any motion, I would hope that that would be a condition that there's follow-up.
It has to happen. It has to happen whether we make it a condition or not.
Well, what you can do is just add the uh, concerns noted in the fire department review, yeah, which is on there. That's, that's understandable. All right, who wants to do this motion? Okay.
Number CU twenty-five zero one one, hometown pizza golf simulations, simulators. Based on the information received from the applicant reflected in the minutes of this meeting in the public hearing held this evening, the planning commission finds the conditional use related information received by the township meets the required standards and findings for conditional land use recommends approval. Specifically, it's found that the following required standards and findings found in section thirty-six dash two twenty-four of the zoning ordinance have been demonstrated by the app A will be harmonious in accordance with the objectives and regulations of this ordinance. B will be compatible with the natural environment and existing and future land uses in vicinity. C that the proposed use will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highway streets, police and fire protection, drainage ways, refuse disposal, or that the person's or agency is responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to provide adequately any such service. D that the proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future neighboring uses persons, property, or the public welfare. E that the proposed use will not create additional requirements and public costs for public facilities and services that will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. And F will be compatible with the township's adopted general development plan. Further, the planning commission recommends the following conditions be placed on the subject conditional land use. One, items outlined in the planner's report dated December first, twenty twenty-five. Two, items outlined in the engineer's report dated November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. And three
Twenty-five.
I'm sorry, twenty twenty-five. That was the fourteen. Items outlined in the fire marshal's report dated November twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Support?
Support.
Any other comment? All right, roll call vote please.
Hyde?
Yes.
Bram?
Yes.
Hendo?
Yes.
Fletcher?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Cobertson?
Yes.
Mission carries seven zero.
All right.
They just sit through the whole
Thank you. Got you worried, I think. Okay, moving on. Woo, all right, um Laura, do you want to kick us off on the, the data center?
Yeah, so this is just a really introductory conversation. This is a lot of information to process. Um, this is the same um ordinance that were, almost the exact same ordinance that was presented to Pittsfield. Um, Mariah has already vetted it. But it's a, it's the same ordinance I've, I've also provided to another township. So this is pretty, this is, this is, if you've looked at it, it's pretty, spoiler please, but it's very, it's pretty restrictive.
This is from Pittsfield, did you say?
Yeah.
Did they approve it or did they
They have not approved it. They have started it, yeah.
Been presented.
They've been, it's been presented and actually, um, when they had their public hearing, where they had a public hearing scheduled and a lot of people came out. This happened at another township that I work in. We provided this as a proactive measure um, so that we're prepared and um, I've had neighbors come out um, demanding that we tell them where it's going to be located in the township. They, there, there's a misunderstanding about what we're, what we're trying to accomplish. And so um, if anyone's listening, there is no application for a data center. Um, this is entirely a proactive measure so that we're prepared if and when that happens. So I just want to take this opportunity to start the conversation. Um, I would encourage you to really dive deep as you have time and see if you can come up with some questions. I'll do my best to answer them, but there are resources that, I mean, Jan has shared some resources and there, it's becoming more um, resources are becoming more available. I know you have, um, just did, um, kind of like their white paper, um, you know, data center information packet like they did for solar. Um, I think that's a great resource. I haven't been able to get all the way through it yet.
Yeah.
But that is a great resource and I'll see if I can't find it. Did you already share it or I, maybe I can find it.
Yeah, uh, and what I want to also say is I, the email that I sent with all the links, that needs to get uploaded into the correspondence too, so it's kind of shared more broadly. But there are, uh, there are a whole bunch of resources there and there's also the toolkit that the Washon County put together too.
Right, and I think some of this is even more restrictive than what they're proposing.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, if you, you know, look at all of the options and see what you think works best for us. Our land is still, like, like we talked about for solar. Um, we don't have a lot of large acreage that would, you know, I think would work for this and our land is very expensive, but that doesn't mean that, that does not mean that it could not we could not have an application.
And what I think So my first thing is that can we make it so the, the numbers, the C lot and building requirements, minimum lot area. I'd like it to be bigger than ten acres and two acres.
That's, that is a starting point. And so as we make it, as we discuss it, we'll discuss what those, it's a minimum. I mean, it it would have to at least be ten acres in order to even consider something. So it could be twenty, it could be forty. I mean, that's something that this body and the board will determine. But this is, this is entirely meant to be a starting point for the conversation and things like setbacks, screening, um, all those things are stuff, are things we'll talk about.
We have that, we have that kind of acreage, ten acres.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I mean, so that, my point is, is
We even have like a hundred.
But, but we don't want to, we also can't make it exclusionary.
Right.
Which is illegal.
It is my understanding, we need to be very careful not to be too restrictive.
Yes, well, and
Unless they get challenged.
Well, and, but that's what happened with large-scale solar, right? Rural communities became overly restrictive in their ordinances, requiring minimum separation from dwelling units to be hundreds of feet. And that's when the state said, we're gonna take this over. And so we have to be careful that we don't take away our local um, governance and our, our local control over these things, so.
Because I bet you a lot of those communities now are saying, I'd rather have a solar farm than a big data center going in. So we need to, we've got to be aware of that stuff.
Selectively make ourselves attractive.
Yes. Yeah, questions?
No, I just want to make a comment that um I thought it was kind of fluff at first and then I got to the restrictions and I said, this is very good. Um, other than the acreage. Um, I think it's uh important that we finalize this fairly quickly to stay in front of it so that we don't talk about it to death.
Yeah.
I second that.
Publish.
We can't do it tonight, but I agree.
I'm wondering if there are a couple, and, and, but a couple people that can work a little bit um, because there is a lot to go through and if a couple people are willing to commit to going through some of those resources and work for the next iteration to come back on the, on the twelve, that's gonna be kind of a
Laura, no, she's suggesting one of us.
Yeah, with, work with Laura. I mean, work with Laura. Laura, to, you, you're, you're out of commission.
What's up, committee is Laura or Con drew?
And I would suggest Kathleen and, and, you know.
No, I'm talking about Hindle.
She was talking about.
Yeah, I, I mean, if there's one of you guys, I mean, I, I've already done quite a bit of research. I think we need somebody from the trustee end to.
I agree with you. You're just saying that because I'm good at research.
Uh, uh, well, I'm, and I'm also saying, I'm also saying that you also, then you have the knowledge as it goes through the trustee. So there's the continuity because it'll go faster if we have that continuity.
Yeah.
Um, and if either of you guys are, would be.
I'm going to bow out. Sorry, I do have a personal situation that's going, that just came up last week. So. I don't know what the whole thing looks like. If I can be assigned a doable portion of it to go over or if that's what you want done, I can help with that, but I can't do, I don't have the time to do pages and pages.
Okay, all right. So why don't we designate, if you're willing to designate the two of us to work with Laura to bring up, to come back on with another iteration. You know, I'd be willing to do that because I, I do want, I mean, I have some conversations, but I just can't.
And we can email you ideas if we, even if we're not on the.
As much, yeah, as much acreage as possible.
I wanted to point out some, one thing that I really wanted stronger language on and that's item three, the renewable energy integration. I'd like to not say encourage, I'd like to require onsite energy generation to be part of it. And I'm talking solar fires. Item, uh, draft, your draft, it's P six. It's six, but it's, item three, renewable energy. And the rate.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because if you see what's going on with DTE, they're, they're fighting committing to generate. I think they're, they're, they're not willing, never, forget about DTE.
No, I know the issue because there, there are, there are people that are, are already investing in nuclear power to provide onsite for the, for the, the data center owner. Yeah.
Yeah.
But so, no, I, I, that's a great idea.
I think that's a really easy fix. Applicants must incorporate onsite renewable energy generation.
And maybe we want to put a percentage, you know, maybe up to sixty percent or ninety percent. You know, we, we might want to think about it.
Yeah, well, and it goes back to the, and to learn a little bit more about the requirements for it's, it's a virtual power plant kind of concept is, is basically what you're trying to do with renewables as opposed to.
And they could contract that out. They don't have to build themselves. They could be, they could have DTE build it onsite. Who manages it? Then we have to think about that.
And then there are, there are a couple of other pieces that I, it just might, minor things like it talked about the, the generation couldn't go over sixty five D B A at the property. And we know that's very loud, but it says except in emergencies. Well, most of those generators are only running in emergencies. So, you know, that, that piece is.
They could sound.
Yeah, and I, I wanted to amp up the road because of, um, there's, that there's a mitigation of road damage. And that's, that's been a biggie out in, the guy who did the presentation from Iowa said they just, it, it just, the amount of the construction just tore up the roads. It was.
Well, do we want to think bigger picture? Try to put this in certain places. I know there's not a lot of land, but these things generate a lot of heat. Yeah, can we use the heat someplace?
Yeah, as a district, as a district.
So that's all, I mean, those are all things we need to, yeah.
Yeah, and then cooling. We ought to be talking about cooling best practices, not, not, don't let them do the open.
The one through.
Just evaporation cooling. Forget that. They have to do what's, about closed loop.
So I think, yeah, there are some pieces in there, but yeah, I think it's a, it's a great start and I think we do need to, because right now we're, we have nothing. So we're in the same place that Pittsfield was.
Township is the test case of the nation, it seems. So we don't want to be number two.
I was just going to say, so I am off during the holidays, but I'm happy, if you could email me those so that I can get a jumpstart, I'm happy to continue to have this conversation on the twelfth. I'm just going to take.
Yeah.
Anybody emails it, include all of us so that we know what's been said. Is that okay? I mean, then we have to put it in the, in the packet for everybody to see, but why would we want to hide it anywhere?
Isn't a good topic to hide on, I don't think.
No.
Well, I don't think.
Yeah.
But yeah, if, we can divvy up some of the research and then, and then work with Laura.
Yeah, even though Bob clearly knows more about it right now than I do.
He's going to be laid up.
Bob can do.
Hey, wait a minute. Have you ever been on those paint mugs? Wait, might come up with some creative. Let me come up with any creative things.
I remember the doctor turning to my wife and saying, it will get better. After I just said something I thought was astoundingly appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, Kathleen. The Huron River Watershed Council, I just wanted to make sure because, yeah, I thought we had a, a good turnout. Bob, do you want to just do a quick summary because until we get the information from them, yeah.
Well, the watershed council, as everybody has heard, was taking our existing green infrastructure and displaying it in map versions for everybody to see and by everybody, I mean, anybody that came into the meeting room. And had us tasked us with identifying on, on the map with markers where the green infrastructure was and where the interconnections were and and then add to it anything that was personal knowledge that didn't show up on the maps. Because these were aerial maps and they, that's where they started from. So, starting with the, what they identified as the, oh, come on.
The bio reserves.
Yeah, the bio reserves and then taking it all the way to where the creeks and the, and the wetlands generate natural paths between them and we're talking about so that the, you know, our, our animals and insects and pollinators and everything can travel from one section to the other and people too, but anyway, I'm getting beyond what they did. They're, they're taking the maps that have all these on it and they're going to detail it from our rough drawings and they're going to present it back with a report to us. What they, what they're finding, what the findings were from that workshop. We'll then take and review it and it'll be during those reviews, I think that it'll become what Rob had asked for, that the public get those maps. Instead of being put on the date on the website, I think they'll be put in the pack for our review.
Yeah, and I think if I heard them right, there were some recommendations if, if, or maybe the master plan as well as the open ordinance.
Yes, well, knowing, knowing full well that we were about to review our master plan, this was the input for that, that'll be very valuable. And then also our open ordinance, which is the overlay for the preservation and enhancement of natural resources. Here we are reviewing what's our natural resources in the town.
Yeah, and they didn't give us a real date on that, but.
I didn't have a date. I'll ask.
Yeah, I think that, that'd be a good follow up. Okay. Any questions on the Huron River Watershed? And that is, there is a recording. I'm also going to post the recording on the ESTF site too. So that's a reference for people because the first part was actually an education session. All right.
May I just make an, um, put forth an idea?
Sure.
Um, it's like nine twenty and what we have left on our agenda are reports. I'm wondering if we could postpone the reports for this evening and adjourn our meeting.
You have to do public comment.
Yeah.
Well, with that exception, I'm sorry. I couldn't even make the motion.
Yeah, is there discussion? I would just, I would propose that there's anything that people, because we don't have another meeting until next year. If there's anything that.
You think is pressing.
It's pressing speed.
Yeah, for, for forever hold your peace.
Is that. My consensus will shorten the report forms. Okay.
Oh, that was, that's a, is that a friendly amendment?
A friendly amendment to, yeah, by consensus, we can shorten the reporting. Is that agreeable? Questions on Laura's?
That wasn't my motion, but.
Am I taking a chair?
I'm, I'm not. If you want to make that motion, I, I withdraw my motion. You can make that motion.
Oh, I don't think it has to be a motion. I'm just sort of saying, let's speed it along.
Be brief.
Okay, I don't have anything in addition here. Okay. Oh, and Jim, do you have anything that we need to know about?
No, I do not.
Okay, um, I don't have any, anything of, other than we're one hundred and seventeen participants for, and I'm going to work on a zero waste highway that I already, okay.
Was there a chicken ordinance approved by the board?
Yes.
Okay, anything else that needs to be reported before the end of the year?
I just would note, next year, remember, our meeting starts at six.
Six.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing for the R two reg.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, we have to do public comment. There is no one in the meeting hall. Is there anyone online? Rob, yes. Hey, Rob.
Once again, uh, thank you to this commission for your in-depth discussions and thoughtfulness. Thank you, Jan and Kathleen. I totally agree. I think that Ember Grove needed a comeback. Question for Laura. What's the next step for Ember Grove? It goes to the board, to the board of trustees next, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so that's why I think it needed a comeback to the planning commission. You guys are much better placed and much more capable for the in-depth discussion and research on these issues and, and sending it off prematurely to the board means that it puts a lot more responsibility on the board to find out those details. So, um, thank you Kathleen and Jan for doing that. And then lastly, apologies to Laura Krebs, Laura Hindle and Kim Moore. Uh, you two were at the Huron Valley Watershed Council Workshop and thank you all for being there and for the vigorous discussions you had. That was very well done. Great meeting.
I noticed you didn't mention me in the earlier public comment.
I sincerely apologize, Kim.
Good recovery, Rob.
Good night, gang.
Thanks, Rob. Anyone else?
Do you want to close public comment?
Second. Okay, second by more. Further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, public comment is closed at nine twenty four.
Report someone.
Adjourn is, okay.
Support.
Support Walsh, Bob's. Okay, any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, she's voting aye.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at nine twenty four. Thank you.